At this time, we'll observe a moment of silence.
Madam Secretary, call the row, please.
Hassew, Guston, Zedra, Sveraza, Dorch, Azzie, Kishel.
Here. Approval of the agenda for May seventeen? Have motion, second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Apologize to everybody for us being a little late. We just had some meetings we had to finish up. Madam Secretary, you got any speaking notices right now? All right. First thing we're gonna do is open up the, uh, we're gonna open up the meeting that was, um, continued until today at three o'clock. There has been a request. Uh, it was explained to everybody we were gonna do this because Mr. Guston was gonna be out of town, uh, over the next few days and, um, nobody objected to it that night, but today, nobody objected to the letter I got yesterday or Friday, but today we got a letter from Laurie Ray requesting this meeting be postponed until, uh, eight o'clock, or on the eighth, excuse me, until June the eighth.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. For the record, that's item B one, and that's TCA Properties, and that public hearing was already opened, and the clerk indicated for the record that proper notice was given last week, and so that's what the continuance is you're talking about at this point in time.
That's right. Excuse me. So what your wish is, uh, council will go ahead and make decisions, or? Mr. Guston, your territory. Everybody's reviewed it and heard it.
Well, unfortunately, it's the first time I've heard that also, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
I don't know what to say. Would you want to continue?
Well, personally, I think we should go ahead and handle it and go from there.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, let's have some discussions with the council people.
We will do discussion, some discussion. I have no public comment card, so we will discussion. Mr. Dorch?
Yeah, I mean, from my standpoint, I mean, I think that the public comment section of this is all but done. I mean, the reason it was continued is because we, we had a three-three vote and we needed a, the seventh member of the council here. I, I don't know what, it hurts to go ahead and move forward with this. Like I said, I mean, we've, we've already had the debate. I mean, so I, I think if everyone's ready, I think we just move forward.
And I would agree with that. The only way I would continue it is if the applicant said it, they wanted to continue it, and of course, if Councilman Guston said he wanted to continue, those were the two circumstance. I agree, we're waiting for Sharon to review the, you know, the, the tapes and...
Ms. Zedra, were you able to review tapes?
I did review the tapes from last week, and I was here and, um, received all of the information for the, um, first public hearing when it was presented to us and continued as well.
Okay. Mr. Azzie, you had something?
Um, she didn't have anything in her letter saying she had new information?
No, sir.
And it, she was not one of the appellants, correct?
Uh, Laurie Ray wasn't, but she was speaking for, uh...
Right, but she, but she was not an appellant.
Excuse me, though. Jill Berryman is the one who requested the continuance, and she was the appellant.
Oh, Jill Berryman.
Amel and Jill Berryman were the appellants.
Right.
But they were here that night when we talked about it.
They were here and they spoke and everything. Ms. Vazza?
The only issue, Mr. Mayor, we've already heard this twice. I mean, we've done two continuances. I think if this was the first time, but we've done this twice, maybe even three times, I believe.
Well, if they'd have pointed out they had new stuff, that would be one thing.
So, I think in fairness, we should move forward today.
Okay, and, and I can agree with that, Mr. Mayor. I guess I would ask as a council, is there any other information that you wanted from either side? No? Okay. And you have no pub, you have no comment?
We have no comment. We've already closed all the public comment.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'll take up...
Shall I entertain a motion?
I will move to uphold the recommendation of the planning commission.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Discussion.
Well, now, we, did we want to take these separately as far as the special use permits and variances, again, Dan?
I don't know. I'm, I'm looking at, at legal. Okay.
So you moved to uphold the special use permits and make the findings?
Okay, so, um, I will move to uphold the special use permit because I can make the findings. I'm looking for the... Let me find the...
They'd be on page two forty-two?
I'm looking for, yeah.
Actually, starting at two forty-one, it looks like.
I haven't gotten there, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Okay, the new one I have doesn't have that. Okay, thank you. So, moved to uphold the planning commission regarding the special use permits because I can make the findings.
Again, I have a second on that, Mr. Dorch. Discussion.
Yeah, not to belabor the point, but, um, for the same reasons I stated at the last hearing, Mr. Mayor, I, I agree with staff and, um, you know, the staff report basically speaks for itself, so I will not be supporting the motion.
Any other discussion? Mr. Azzie?
I want to disclose, I did go out on, on site with Bill Thomas. We drove all around there and showed me what the extent would be, what the extent of the fill would be if they were allowed to build a road on there, which they are allowed to build a road. So I was able to look at all that, and we talked about some of the cuts and fills.
Okay. Any other discussion? Have a motion, have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no.
No.
Show the vote five to two.
No, no, no.
Excuse me.
I voted aye.
Oh, he voted aye. Sorry.
Show the vote five to two. All right, on your next motion?
I will ho, uh, move to uphold the, uh, planning commission regarding the special use permit.
One second, Dan. Can I interrupt you real quick? We wanted to put some additional conditions on that, I think, and we didn't do that. Do we want to reconsider that last motion?
That's right.
Yeah, we want...
We did agree to put, we agreed to put some additional conditions on that.
Some billboards and also what the...
No billboards.
What the looks would be, the trees and the riprap.
So I'm assuming we'll have to reconsider that to add those, correct?
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. Yes, and the person making the motion would be the individual council member who'd have to move for reconsideration in the second.
Okay, I would move for reconsideration.
Second.
Have a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Again, no, that's, that, thank you. Again, I'd move for the approval of the special use permit with the two conditions we put on it, that there would be no billboards on the property, and also that the, uh, landscaping enhancements would be, would be, uh, put on the property. Would be maintained, I guess, is better.
I have a second. And now, yes.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I, I believe, um, Councilman Guston, from the last meeting, it was maintenance for the right period area, and then there were a couple other in the email, treatments of the pipe outlet to make the exit appear natural and behind, and blend into the landscape, and then the addition of the grates, screens at both ends to prevent people traffic through the pipe, were, were some of the things that we had heard at the, the last meeting.
I didn't remember the fourth one. The others I remembered.
I, I, okay, I, I don't remember the other two, but, but I know that the, the applicant, applicant did say they would do that, so we, we added to it as conditions, that's fine.
Okay. Mr. Azzie?
Councilman Guston, we also had discussed, not the last meeting, but when I met with you yesterday, about the treatment of the fill, about whether it would be trees and riprap, or...
At, at trees, I asked the question, maybe I wanted to add anything to it, so, um, Councilman Azzie and I talked about this yesterday, about the, the condition of the, once the dirt is moved, what's the hill gonna look like, and the treatment of that?
For the record, Bill Thomas, representing TCA Properties, I believe I have a plan that reflects the discussion, if I can find it here. Essentially, what it was, is our original plan had talus slope, which is, um, organically placed rock piles with, with trees in them, and I, my understanding is that's what would like, you'd like to see placed back in. We had removed those, the staff had suggested that it just be left, um, with revegetation as opposed to those talus treat areas. So my understanding is that you would like to see those placed back in as we had in the original plan.
That's part of it, but then again, that, that top of that hillside, that when we drove in to take a look at, what is it gonna look like? We, you, you talked about the dirt being moved, but we don't know what it's gonna look like. Is it gonna be same level as the freeway?
Um, it'll be a little bit above the freeway, and from the residential side to the south, most of it is gonna be a cut, so the people looking at it from Forest Street and the neighborhood to the south will see the hill, um, in its natural state. Where there's going to be fill, we'll place a ten-foot berm, and that berm will be re-landscaped with landscape plan that'll include trees and, and the vegetation that you would normally see on a project.
Okay, then we will, we'll add those as, uh, supplements or conditions. Councilman Azzie, is there any other question you had on that? Okay.
All right, I have a motion, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Show the vote five, two.
Move to uphold the planning commission regarding the special use permits for hillside Well, I thought you, we were talking back and forth. Do you want them individually or all together?
Individually, please.
Okay, just made a motion for that. Do I have a second?
Have a motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Show the vote five, two.
I, I move to uphold the planning commission regarding the special use permits for disturbance of a major drainage way.
Have a motion, have a second?
I can, and I can make the findings, excuse me, yes.
Have a motion, second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Show the vote five, two.
I will move to uphold the, the planning commission regarding the special use permits for cut slopes of twenty feet or greater in depth, a fill slope ten feet or greater in height, and I can make the findings.
Have a motion, second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that, uh, vote no?
No.
Show the vote five, two.
Okay, I think we've covered all elements of that agenda item. I'm looking for that. Let me see. Okay. Um, oh, okay. I move to approve the planning commission regarding the variances to the hillside ordinance.
Have a motion? Got a second?
And I can make the findings.
Have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion, five, two. Any other motion, legal counsel? Counselor, you got anything? If you've got something, come on up to the mic, please.
Marilyn Craig, Deputy City Attorney, I just wanted to make sure that you address each and every special use permit in each and every variance, and I wasn't sure because I didn't have my document any longer. Did we cover all of the variances?
His motion was to approve the variances to the hillside ordinance, which there's two.
There's two, so it is, is, are you then acting upon both of those variances?
Yes. But he said variances, so I assumed it was both.
Okay. All right, and you acted on each of the special use permits?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
And here's your notes. Ms. Craig, these are yours.
Okay, thank you. At this time now, um, item B one is passed five to two with all the findings and all of the motions that needed to be made. Now we'll go to item B two, public hearing regarding proposed assessment and approval of the levy assessment for years eleven, twelve, for the downtown maintenance special district. We have some people wish to speak. Let me see, huh? Mr. Scott, you wanna join us at the table, please? One minute, Mr. Galloway, and we'll be right with you.
We gonna let Dick have a vote in here, too?
He's got one. Mr. Galloway?
Thank you, Your Honor, members of the council, Mr. Scott. My name's Jim Galloway, I live at the Palladio. I was the first resident there in June of 'oh-seven, and I have a couple questions. Number one, is, am I seventy-five percent safer and ninety-five percent cleaner today than I was four years ago? Because my police taxes have gone up seventy-five percent, and my maintenance taxes have gone up ninety-five percent. So, I don't think so. I've got a couple questions as to how, and we've talked the last four years on this, how we're assessing the properties. According to the statute, my understanding is that the properties are to be assessed based on relative benefit received. And when I look at my own building, I'm wondering if the value of the property has any difference to the value received for someone in maintenance or in security by the police. So if you have a penthouse, or if you have a one-bedroom unit, the price that you're paying is quite different, but I think that the benefit that you're receiving is basically the same, so we may not be assessing the value received correctly. I submitted, uh, to the council a suggestion that it might be more reasonable if we, uh, based the assessed benefits based upon number of people served. And for example, if you figure we have a hun, a one and a half average residents per unit, we may have a hundred and fifty people in the building. And you look down at the Circus Circus, and I think our total bills are comparative, uh, Steve has the details, and I've sent information to him, but I think that, uh, where a hundred and fifty people are served at the Palladio for the same or a greater dollar value, you have two, three, four, five thousand people, employees and guests being served, for a lesser amount. So I'm asking that maybe we recalculate the formula on how we charge for the benefits that we get. I'm glad to live downtown, I like a safe, clean neighborhood, but I think that residents, since we're new to the area and weren't considered when the statute was, uh, originally developed, we're getting overcharged, so thank you for your consideration. Any questions?
Thank you. Jim Shaw?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the Reno City Council. For the record, my name is Jim Shaw, and I reside at the Palladio in downtown Reno. If you notice on my request to speak form there, Mr. Mayor, I marked the box indicating in opposition to. I'm not opposed to paying an assessment for maintenance and police living in downtown. What I am opposed to, and my reason for speaking this afternoon, I believe is the process or the formula that is used. I was here a year ago, probably in May, when we had a similar meeting to discuss the downtown assessment charges. And after that meeting, what was proposed was passed, but I think that we got a commitment from you folks to review this with your staff, which I think we did. And we had some meetings. I'm not sure what the final outcome of those meetings were in reference to what I received, my wife received in the mail about a month ago, in reference to what we have to pay for 2011, 2012. I will grant you the fact that our assessment has gone down a very little, but when I saw what we have to pay not only for police and for maintenance, it was, uh, very similar to, to sticker shock. I'm, I'm also interested in finding out from staff, your staff, what the total assessment of the Palladio is in, in dollars and cents. What do we pay? All of us there add up all our assessments, what do we pay? I've never seen that amount, and I'd like to see that amount compared to some of the other properties downtown. I don't like the fact that a residential building such as the Palladio is assessed similarly, I think, to the casinos and a resident, or, and the commercial properties downtown. And last but not least, as many of you know, I've lived in Sparks for a number of years. I moved to Reno three and a half years ago. I love it downtown, living downtown Reno. However, I'm concerned, and I'm concerned about future people living here if by these assessments, that maybe the time will come when they can't afford to live downtown. And then all the work that you folks have done, and to your credit, I give you an A-plus, I think that, uh, this might prevent people from wanting to move downtown, because basically, let's face it, I don't think they can afford it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate your time and attention.
Thank you, sir. Pat Ferguson?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name's Pat Ferguson. I own a unit and live in the Palladio. I've been before you for the past three years, and I won't, I won't belabor my points that I made then. This is the least fun thing I do all year. Uh, I thought we made some traction last year. Uh, it was even reported in the press that, uh, we were gonna move forward and maybe expand the tax district to pull in, uh, some of the residential and commercial parcels that are outside the district but enjoy the benefits of the extra police that the tax district pays for. Pardon me if you are doing something in that direction, but I haven't heard anything there. This year, I'd like to talk about the methods of, of taxation and the apportionment based on assessment is what we use now, and, and I think we beat that to pieces that it, for residences, it doesn't work. And we, we've talked about the calls for service thing. There are issues with that. Uh, it has a chilling effect on people calling the police, and when maybe they should, they don't want to be taxed for that call in the next year. And the police have to, uh, attach an address to the call, and maybe the address isn't where the event went, sidewalk, streets, and so forth. Lot of problems with that. Uh, some people have proposed a square footage assessment, and I see a lot of problems with that, a vacant building that doesn't use a lot of, uh, services, uh, probably isn't fair to be taxed at the, at the same rate as somebody else. But as has been alluded to here, uh, and you should have a letter from our accountant in there, they've studied, and they think the fairest way is to, uh, tax based on population, as Mr. Galloway said there. People are the ones that have the need for both maintenance and the police tax district services. People are victims, people are, uh, victims, suspects, and so forth. It's people that dirty the sidewalks that need to be cleaned up. Now pigeons do a pretty good job of that, too, but, uh, I can't figure out a way to tax them. So I'd like you to really consider a model based on, uh, the population. It seems to be the most fair thing, and you could probably tier it like zero, one-hundred is any, one category, one-hundred to three-hundred, whatever the category's moved up to. You wouldn't have to be specific on which ones, uh, but there's a possibility of doing it in a way that, uh, that would be more fair. So, I'm concerned that these, the timing of the meetings that we have here are just to satisfy state law. You can't do anything about this now with just, uh, a short time period. You're putting the budget in, uh, finality, uh, here this week there. You can't change the method, but I'd like you to move in that direction this next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Bev Ferguson?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Bev Ferguson. I'm married to Pat Ferguson. I own a unit and live in the Palladio full-time. And I, of course, I want to make a quick statement against the proposed assessment for the police and maintenance tax districts. Like all other property owners in Reno, we have lost a small fortune in the last three years. Our unit is now assessed and appraised at $200,000 less than when we purchased it three years ago. That's about forty percent of its original value. That's too bad, but that's not the point I want to make. Our task district assessments are about the same as when we purchased in spite of our plunging value. The way you calculate the taxes assures that the tax districts will always collect at pre-recession levels, and the commercial interest can always position for an assessment decrease based on loss of earnings. We, the downtown residential, residential owners, can't do that, so we continue to pay a higher proportion of taxes than the commercial interests, who undoubtedly use more of the task district resources. It's blatantly unfair, and we have complained about this taxation system for the past three years. This is my second time here. My last point, you're asking the police and other city employees to take a seven-point-five percent cut. Salaries make up the bulk of tax district expenditures. Shouldn't our tax rate reflect some of that savings? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Roberta Ross?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and city council. For the record, my name is Roberta Ross. I own the Ross Manor Residential Hotel in, within the police tax district. What I'd like to show you, I just want to show you my last three years and the increases. I just want to put some numbers and statistics in front of you so you can see the increases that were done. Can you help me out? Oh, I guess maybe you can't. Um, I, I yellowed out the last three years for you at the bottom. Those are the three in particular I wanted you to show. Push it up, maybe? You can see in an oh-nine to ten, I had a sixty-seven percent increase in my police tax district. From ten to eleven, there was a twenty-nine percent increase, and this year coming up, there's a fifteen percent increase in the police tax district. What I wanted to say to you is I am a believer of the police tax district. I think it's good to have it. I do believe that we all have to pay, and there has to be some increases as we go along, because that's just part of the game, is that I believe there were some instructions given to the chiefs in regards to looking at the calls for service, and listening to what Mr. Ferguson says, is maybe not this year, but during the next year, is that to look at what we can do different with the police tax district, where can we go with it? I think the calls of, of for services is an issue, and I also think that the hours used is a big issue. If you were to go back to the records of the police, is you can see very clearly that they bring, bring to the police tax district meetings what hours and when the sta, when the, this team is used for the most part. That also has to be evaluated over the last three years, and it, and ebbs and flows with the needs. And I think you can see that the needs now are that the needs are being used a lot after four o'clock and not so much during the day. But I would ask that you do continue with whatever direction that you've given our chief and your staff to further look into it, because the, the numbers are becoming cost prohibitive. One of the things I just... One of the things I just wanted to tell you also is that we don't have a breakdown this year from the county, the way they gave us our records, but last year, my police tax district fund was 74% of my Reno city fund that we get through Washoe County. So there's something obviously wrong with that. When your city or Reno funds through Washoe County, this is 74% of that. Does that make sense? So with that, I'd just like to say thank you for this time, and to, I hope that you give great consideration in this next year to really tightening up on this. I have taken this, and I can't speak for the DIA, not as a representative, but it is one of the things through our Safe and Clean Committee with the Downtown Improvement Association that we will be going forward and looking with at the board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have no other public comment cards? I'll bring it back to the table for discussion. Mr. Aziz?
Yeah, for actually, the attorneys, we go through this every year. We're not able to change this district at all, can we?
Mr. Mayor, before we go into that, I believe council member House Jeff has a disclosure, and legally that needs to be made as soon as possible in a meeting.
Mr. Aziz?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, actually, I do work for Mr. Shaw as well as Mrs. Shaw, and he, Mr. Shaw just spoke, so he actually is a client of my firm. So in consultation with the city attorney, I not only have to disclose, but I have to recuse myself on this matter.
Thank you very much. All right, legal counsel or?
Yeah, for the record, Jonathan Shipman, Deputy City Attorney. Yeah, it's difficult to change it. I mean, we're kind of stuck with what we have. There potentially are some things you can do with an apportionment method, but, and Steve can probably speak to this, historically, that's been very difficult because there's coming up with a method. Every method we've looked at actually makes the residential owners pay more than what they would be paying otherwise.
But I don't know, because I keep, I thought I heard that we can't change, that we'd have to, we'd have to liquidate the current one to form a new one.
Correct.
And it's not in our power to liquidate the current one. Because it was voluntary tax imposed by the people who live in this district.
Right, and I'd have to double-check the law, but I think you're correct on that to the extent that there has to be essentially a petition by 10% of the property owners that own 25% of the assessed value in the district to make any changes to the district, either amend it or so.
And we say this every year. I mean, I would love to do. I don't think it's fair either, but I don't think there's a legal way for us to do it. Now, you may be closer to being able to do it because the casinos are getting a reduction, and yours, that's why your bill's going up, so you may be more than, you may be getting close to 25% of the value where you can take control of the SAD. But I don't think we can change the apportion, unless, unless that petition goes forward and you disband it, then you talk about how you'd form a new one. We don't, we're not in charge of how they're assessed. That's the county assessor, what the value is.
Well, you select the method of assessment, and we've looked, like we said, we've looked at that in the past, and we haven't come up with something that would be more equitable. But that's potentially an option, but we've tried.
Why don't we have staff look into it? Legal counsel and staff look into it. Come back to us and let's see what we can or can't do, or what we have to do to be able to change things or not change things, so that we can tell the people what they need to do. If they have to have 10% of the votes in that district or something, or 20, then let's be able to tell them that.
Well, and that's it, Your Honor. I mean, we've done it, and what needs to happen to disband, or to augment, or to subtract people from the district is to get 10% of the property owners with 25% of the assessed value to petition to have that happen.
And then let's get with them, figure it, send them a letter, tell them what they have to do so that they'll know what to do during this year.
I think we've, I think we've, we've been down that road several times, I think. I mean, I don't, I don't think that's what's at question. I think it's what they're questioning is if there's another way to allocate the assessment. And, and it's what you're telling me is you've looked at other ways to allocate the assessment, and every time you did that, there's, it ends up the residential units pay more?
Yes, sir. Steve Hardesty, Public Works. In the past, in my previous life, I was with redevelopment and actually developed a spreadsheet that allowed me to look at different criteria. I could plug in 10% for building size, I could plug in for front footage, those kind of items, and I could come that out, and it'd give me a spreadsheet that would give me the various assessment totals. And in all of those instances, no matter how I worked it around, it came out that residential properties took it in the shorts, okay, to speak plainly. The dynamics downtown have changed quite a bit here in the last few years, and what I am working on at this moment is a reevaluation using a few other criteria, one of those being units per parcel. And I'm looking, I'm going to look in a little bit more of how we can determine this population per parcel item, maybe was brought up, capacity, whatever. But I'm not sure how that would work legally, because whatever we come up with, whatever we come up before you with has to be legal and it has to be impartial. It can't be something that we just manufacture and, you know, stick it to this group, or stick it to that group, or forbid that group. So it has to be something that we can defend legally. And that's, and I am working on that, and as soon as I can get something together. One of the issues that you guys brought together the previous year was to get a maintenance committee together, and we have had those. We've had, I think, believe, I believe we've had three meetings so far, quarterly. We've got another one coming up in June. I will be, when I get done with my analysis on this thing and see how we can do this, I'm going to bring that to that committee, and I'm going to get those folks on it, see if they've got some additional ideas that we can put into that, and we will have something to come back to you, either saying yes, we can do it, or no, we can't. As far as the apportionment method goes, you guys are the determining factor on that. I think you guys can do the apportionment method.
As long as it's defended.
Right there. As far as the other things, expanding, eliminating, or doing any of that stuff.
So what they're proposing, so what they're proposing, you're actually looking at something similar to what they're proposing, or some kind of hybrid of what they're proposing?
Yes, sir.
To make a determination if, one, if it's feasible, and two, if it's legal?
I'm looking at this, too, and I'm very concerned at the rate we're going, because we're seeing the rate that we have to provide to the county increase significantly. I mean, we're just, you could look at Ms. Ross's spreadsheet that she had earlier with the rate. Back in 1995, it was 2.1 cents for the police district. It's now 66 cents, or 21 cents, and now it's 66 cents. It's escalating at a much larger rate. I'm not sure the assessed value is sustainable for another couple, for more than another couple of years anyway, so that's just my opinion on that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Steve, is what Councilman Aziz said, is that true? The casinos evaluations go down, so you pass it on to the other people?
Yes, sir. The pie continues to get larger based on the revenues from the previous year and the increase in the per capita, the CPI. So as the pie gets bigger and the values go down, the casinos actually go down based on their, on the way that they're taxed and property values go.
Are they different than residential?
Excuse me?
Are they different than residential?
Yes, sir. Their evaluations are based, on a formula based on whatever their win is and their value, their take, whatever it is, plus their assessed value, some kind of formulation. I'm not sure how that works.
I thought it was on the assessed value plus the square footage on the street.
Yes, it goes down, yes. It goes down, it can go down considerably faster because they can appeal and get a decrease through the assessor's office.
So if they go down, you're going to take, I don't understand how you do that. How do you take and reassess the monies that went down from the casinos to everybody else in the downtown area? How do you do that?
Okay. The assessed value or the assessment itself is based on a proportion amount of the district, okay? So if the casino proportion of the district decreases, then it has to be picked up someplace else. As it decreases, the residentials increase. Their percentage of the pie gets bigger. It's just.
Well, I think along the lines of the mayor said earlier, and you're saying, I think times have changed. When this was all started, the casinos were probably footing 80% of the bill.
It was, they were probably exceeding that, sir. And the purpose behind that was that the casinos had more than enough money to facilitate the cleanup around their properties. This is, this is what I was informed the purpose of this district was, is that between the casinos, the other properties didn't quite have the capabilities to keep their sidewalks clean, and maybe just didn't have the heart that the casinos had. And what they had is you'd go from one casino that was spotless to, you know, a block that might be a little blighted, back to another casino that was spotless. By creating this district, the casinos were able to have uniform cleanliness throughout downtown. And so that was the original thing, and they were running probably 85% to 90% of the assessments. As the goals of the redevelopment agency at the time were, as things got cleaner, as things got safer, people would move downtown. Well, that's happening, and the benefits of the clean and safe downtown are being realized, but the whole dynamics have changed. So, yeah, I think, yeah, you're right, sir. Things have changed, and we do need to start thinking of a way of looking at it differently. I'm just, I'll try my hardest to try to figure that out.
Well.
And come back before you.
Maybe we need to consider putting together a committee so that this doesn't drag on until May of 2012. Again, another year goes by because times have changed, and I wasn't aware. That's why I wanted to ask that question. It doesn't, just off the top, doesn't seem fair to me that if the people, and I, and as everyone knows, I represent for those hotel casinos as a government affairs person. Those assessments go down, and these other folks get stuck with it. It doesn't seem to me that's a fair, a fair formula or model. And I would also put on the record that most, all these people that have spoke here today have been before the rab at different times, and have never complained about paying the tax. It's just they want it to be fair. I've never heard anything different out of their mouths. I mean, and that's, I think that's, needs to be on the record and stated. I think they're good people, and it's just they're getting caught up in the model. And the model's not the same as it was 10, 15 years ago when this thing was started.
We could go back five years, sir. It's not the same.
Yeah, so.
Changed a lot.
Thank you.
Well, why don't you and legal get together and see if there's some things we can do. Ms. Brazel?
Couple of questions then on that, on the SAD, I guess. Does that happen with the events center and Retract, too, then?
Those are government agents, those are government facilities, and they don't get assessed. They've got an assessed value of zero.
No, what I'm saying, though, we have different SADs for bonds. We have an SAD on Retract, we have an SAD on the Events Center.
No, no, ma'am. Those things are, those things are fixed as the time, as of the time that the assessments are approved. So Retract was frozen in time, basically in 1999 when the, when the district was created. And then when it was levied in 2006, we used the 1999 assessed values to do that. And then the downtown Events Center, that one was taken over by the downtown casinos, the four. We had to redo the bonds on those.
So they, so if they come in for reassessment, then that assessment level doesn't go down?
Not a bit.
Okay, so isn't there a way, then, just following up on what Dave said, because it does seem to me that if you look at the law, then you have this unfair taxation essentially what's going on now with, with people that are getting assessed, paying for the larger properties, and I guess I'd make the assumption that all four properties probably got dropped this year again. So if they wanted to dissolve, I mean, what happens if council just said today, okay, we're just going to dissolve the district? We're not going to do the police, the maintenance?
I believe, and I've discussed this with, I've discussed this with council, I believe that his recommendation would be, to dissolve the maintenance district would be to eliminate the ordinance on which it was created. The police district has a set of timelines that are required to do that. One would be the petition by the, by 10% of the people owning 25% of the assessed value in the district to actually dissolve the district. And that needs to be done by the 31st of December of this year, and then it's a one-and-a-half to two-and-a-half-year process after that to eliminate that district.
Okay, so Jonathan, so then technically, following up on that, can we dissolve the maintenance district through ordinance?
We can, but I, what I need to do, and I apologize because I wasn't aware that this was coming up today, but we have memos on this exactly in terms of what the process would be to dissolve, to repeal the ordinance, and then as Steve was talking about, the wrap-up, the wind-up, and liquidation, and what would have to happen, and, and all that sort of stuff, yeah.
So, and then one more question, Mr. Mayor, because this was talked about at public comment. If we can then repeal the ordinance, I'm not saying that's something I'm in favor of, but why couldn't then the council, if we have the ability to do that, then why couldn't we extend the district to make it more fair and equitable? I mean, we have the memos right here. We're doing the street sweeping five times a week. The rest of the city is at one, one time per month, those types of things. So you're getting a, more of a benefit within, within that downtown region. So if we can repeal the ordinance, why couldn't we expand the boundary on, on those who benefit?
Well, there's a couple of different things there that you're talking about, like repealing the ordinance or expanding the boundary. The easiest way to clean it up would be to have, like, for instance, the property owners, the downtown property owners, the four casinos come forward. They could clearly petition to amend the district to opt-out residential areas. I mean, that would, and, and I understand that that was attempted, but that didn't come to fruition.
Could they, could they appeal to expand the district?
Correct. They can also appeal to expand the district, but, and again, I'd have to double-check what the law says on what you have to do. It's the same rule. It's 10% owning 25% of the assessed value. You have the ability to, again, to determine the assessed, the method of apportionment, and that's where Steve was talking about. When you talk about equitably, you know, spreading this out, that is in your purview. It's just that staff hasn't come up with an apportionment method right now that's any better than assessed value.
Well, I think, Mr. Mayor, if you could get the, the four properties to petition to expand the district, we could certainly start looking at that, because if you had the benefits, I agree with the property owners, you have a lot more people in the district that are benefiting than, than what's currently being provided for right now.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I don't think, the problem is not with the four downtown casinos being opposed to expanding the district. Obviously, that would probably even go further in lowering their assessments. The problem is, John, if I'm not mistaken, last year, we were told that in order to, to expand the police district, as an example, we had to dissolve it and start a new one.
Yes, yeah, essentially.
That's, that was the problem, if there was a problem. You had to, you had to, we have to dissolve what we have and go out and petition and see if we can form a new one. There's a risk involved in that, and let's just be honest about it. You may not get a new one formed.
Is that the same with the maintenance, too?
I also will state that.
Because, I'm sorry.
We, being downtown property owners, have never, you know, they, they probably, I wasn't involved in those days, and I don't think anybody at this table was, obviously, but they wanted a cleaner downtown. So somebody probably at the cities, let's form a special assessment district, we'll have, we'll have, you know, dedicated people to clean in downtown Reno. That started out as a good program. Next year, I think, if I read that correctly, the special maintenance district is going to create about $200,000. That's not enough. And the city, in our financial straits, does not have the supplemental money to put with that, that you all have been putting with it. So we're, that's something that seriously needs to be looked at. On the police, the same thing, and I've heard it from these same folks. They don't necessarily want to do away with maintenance. They like the fact that we can have a clean downtown, and they like a safe downtown, and we pay extra money to get extra police protection. It also helps the city. You all, you know, that's another million point three that comes out of the assessment district that helps to pay for the police. And I think everybody feels that we don't have a problem paying it. We want to pay it because we want to have a safer downtown. I think, Jessica, the biggest problem we got here is, is times have changed. It's just the model doesn't work fairly. If the Palladio building was appraised as one building, it'd be a different ballgame, it sounds to me like. But what's happening is, is each unit is being charged like it's a freestanding unit, like a casino or a liquor store or anything else. And, and they're not, you know, bless their hearts, they're expensive units. They're nice units.
The problem is, though, too, Dick, is that what we're seeing, though, is that the casinos are still getting the same level of service, and, and their property tax bills and their assessment bills keep going down.
That's why I say the model's broke.
And they're getting the majority. And they're getting the majority of the services. I, so, I mean, we've gotta look at.
I don't think they're getting the majority. Design this at the table right now.
Yeah.
I think council, uh, because you gotta look at it, you say they gotta have ten percent of the vote of the property appraised?
Ten percent of the property owners that own twenty-five percent of the assessed value in order to.
Well, it'd be hard to even get that because of the value of the land the casinos have, so you'd have a hard time getting it. You go back, research it, look and see what you can do, and come back to us. Mr. Aziz?
I spoke with her a little bit about this at a DIA meeting to, to help the DIA move forward with this a little bit, because we talked, at one point, about ten years ago, the DIA was a lot more active, and they're looking at forming a BID. And maybe the option would be to, to get rid of these two districts and form a bid district, which is a business improvement district that would be more privatized, um, in their own realm to do that. But also, maybe we give them the spreadsheet, so they can run their own models, um, they can put anything else in there that they want. I don't know if we have up-to-date figures on the assessed value of all the properties in these districts that we would need to put in the, in your, your spreadsheet?
I, yes, sir, I have the most up-to-date that the county has, and I received those in late February, early March. Those are the preliminaries, the county will have final numbers after June thirtieth.
So why don't we just give them the spreadsheet too, so they don't have to rely on us to give them information? They could play with the numbers themselves and see which one, if they think they're, one would be better, because they could propose to us a different method that they would rather us do. And I'd like to see that spreadsheet too, that'd be great.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? Chair will entertain a motion to accept the report. Mr. City Manager, you got the direction? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chaserino, City Attorney's Office. I just wanna make sure, because my understanding of this is that a decision has to be made on this as a building block for your fiscal budget, so I just wanted to make council aware of that.
You're absolutely correct, it's this year that we're doing, and we're gonna work on the other. So Chair will entertain a motion for approval.
I'll move to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Do I have a second? Have a second discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I, I don't think it's fair. I mean, I think we're stuck, and we have to approve this, but I think we do have to work on something, and quickly, because I think it's a disincentive for people to move into the urban core, too, when they're getting these huge assessments. And, and so I, I would like to put a timeline on this and, and have staff come, come back to us, but I, I don't think this, this structure is fair, I really don't.
I don't think any of us think it's fair, and I think the thing is, we wanna see if we can correct it, and, uh, with all the budgets and everything going on, a time certain, I would say it'd be ninety days or a hundred and twenty days, whatever you think. But I want you working with the property owners and everybody.
Yes, sir. A hundred and twenty days would be terrific.
Okay. You'll make that part of the motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, second, okay with that? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those that oppose, no, motion carries unanimously. Item B three.
Mr. Mayor, would you open up the public hearing, please?
Is this what? Okay, Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, no correspondence was received.
Okay, we have some people wishing to speak. Nettie? Okay, no, in favor, um, Stephen Jacobs?
I'm Stephen Jacobs, I'm chair of the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, and I wanna thank you for the opportunity to address you again. I am pleased that the negotiations seem to be going well, and possible layoffs can be averted. However, the committee, which met Tuesday, is quite concerned that without the restoration of the two outreach worker positions, the gains that we've made in the last few years will be lost. For example, uh, the city acts as the agent to bring all the agencies to deal with seniors together. And the outreach workers are part of that. The other one is we've improved attendance greatly at all the rec centers, but particularly at Neil Road, which we've had a special interest in. And if we don't continue outreach in Neil Road, we feel the population, uh, will disappear. But it certainly won't grow and attract the people that should be going there. We considered the use of volunteers and realized that volunteers are heavily used now, but volunteers cannot run an organization, they need supervision, and they need direction. So that would require staff who take orders from some central point. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Donna Clontz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Donna Clontz. I'm also a member of the Senior Citizens Advisory Board, um, speaking, as, as Steve did, on behalf of the, um, the small staff that currently exists that create and supervise and run some thirty to fifty programs a month for the seniors here in Reno, and also for the surrounding cities and the whole, um, the whole county area and beyond that take advantage of the programs that happen, because we've got a few, very few folks that spend time working with all of the agencies, all of the nonprofits, all of the providers of various kinds of senior services for the senior population here in the city of Reno. Um, the, the publication that the city puts out, the senior connections, would, would go away, and everything in it would go away if you have to follow through with the budget cuts that are recommended at the six percent level. I, too, am hopeful that the, the talks are going well with the bargaining unit, so that this won't have to happen. But as you deliberate in, in figuring out what we'll need to go, I, I urge you to, to, uh, keep the bare minimums that we need to continue the outreach that provides the senior programs with all of the volunteers that, that participate in, in both our rec centers and around the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Having no other public comment, I'm gonna bring it back to the table. Mr. Knutson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and council members.
Are you gonna do this?
Were you gonna give a presentation? I was gonna go ahead and do it.
I was gonna, uh, on the fees, make a comment, but I can do that later.
Uh, yeah, actually, we do need, uh, we do need Mr. Hester to make a comment on the fees, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Pardon me for interrupting you, Mr. City Manager. Um, the building permit fees and the planning fees are, were automatically bumped up in the schedule by the Consumer Price Index, and we'd like to withdraw those, uh, for two reasons. One is we think part of your economic development program, you would like to keep those flat. And in fact, the, the building fund is operating in the black, projected to operate in the black. Uh, second of all, is we did not take them to the enterprise committee as we typically do, uh, just because of those assumptions, so we'd like to withdraw those, and that's all I have to say, sorry for the interruption.
And to be clear, you're talking about just the building fees, correct?
Building, and, and I was looking to see if there's planning fees in there, I don't think, they're, they're the same with the planning fees.
Thank you, Mr. Hester. Um, I have a brief presentation I'd like to give, um, based on the two budget workshops that we had on May fifth and on May ninth. On May fifth, I brought forward the status quo budget, as I called it, that, uh, rolled forward all of the service levels that we currently have this year, with the understanding that we would achieve, um, seven and a half percent savings in salaries and, and related benefits, uh, from concessions from bargaining units. And then on the ninth, I presented a budget, represents six percent cuts across the board from all departments, um, if we were unable to reach the conclusion with that. And today, I will be asking you to move forward with that budget. Negotiations are still underway, and we haven't reached a conclusion yet. Um, at any time in the future, we can, of course, amend that budget and rescind any layoffs that are associated with it. But at this point, because we are at the budget hearing, I did wanna move forward with that. And I have a brief presentation, because this is a public hearing, I wanted to spend a few minutes going over uh, the reasons why we're in the situation we're in today. If you'd move to the next slide, please. This is a summary slide that shows the assessed valuation within the city in the gold bars that are going up. And as you can see, from two thousand and one to two thousand and nine, there was quite an increase in assessed valuation, uh, across the city. The red line that goes across represents seat taxes. And as you can see, that peaked slightly earlier than our assessed valuation, because it's a leading indicator of the economy. The reason I point that out is, is that it peaked back in two thousand and seven and dropped about thirty percent, uh, to today. But as you can see, it's starting to level off. What we're hoping is, is that that leveling off continues, and that we start to see an increase in the next couple of years. And as I pointed out, as a leading indicator, that may give us some feel for what will happen with assessed valuation and property taxes. The blue line, which is right below that, is the property taxes that we collect. And as you can see, that peaked in two thousand and ten after the peak in assessed valuation. It's a lagging indicator, and it usually follows about eighteen to twenty-four months behind the assessed valuation. So when we do start to see recovery in assessed valuations, when the economy does start to level off, that will continue to drop for about eighteen months after that, and then that will level off and start to rise as the economy rises. The bottom line, the green line, is licenses and permits. That has shown less elasticity, and one of the reasons for that is, back in, uh, two thousand and nine, we instituted a one percent increase in franchise fees for gas and electric that went into effect in two thousand and nine, and the second level of that will go into effect in two thousand and twelve. And that constitutes all of our different franchise fees being at the limit of what they can be. So those are gonna start to level off as well in the future. Um, the only reason they've continued to go up is because of those fee increases. Next slide, please. In looking at the seat taxes, this is the last ten years' worth of data. One of the things that I wanted to point out to you is that it's a relatively stable pattern over the year. This is July through June, the fiscal year. Each year, we see a certain level of spending through July and August, with a dip in November. Then, of course, over the holiday season, there's a peak, which drops off rather quickly in January and February, and then starts to rise back up towards the summer. That pattern continues, even though we've had a thirty percent decrease in overall revenues. That dash line you see coming off of the yellow line at the bottom is our projection for the remainder of this year. We're seeing a little bit of an increase over what we had last year in the first part of the year, and if that continues, we'll actually have more coming in than budgeted. Next year, we, we plan to have about the same amount coming in, because we've seen that relative stability that I showed you on the first slide. Next slide, please. The property tax collections, unfortunately, will continue to drop probably for the next two years, even if we see some stability in the real estate market next year. It has started to drop less precipitously, the first two years it dropped by about eight percent, next year we expect about five and a half. Uh, after that, it may even shrink a little bit less of a drop, until it does start to level off. But that's only if we see, in the next twelve months or so, some stability in the, uh, real estate market. Regardless, um, it's going to be ten to twelve years before we see that get back to the levels it was in two thousand and ten. You can go ahead. In the building permit fund, um, we saw a peak of activity in about two thousand and five, two thousand and six. The bars represent the total value of the properties that, uh, were built with the permits, and that number is on the left. You can see it was slightly over a billion dollars back in, uh, two thousand and six. And then the number of permits is the gold line, peaking at a little bit, over twelve thousand. We have about a little less than half the amount of permits projected next year from that peak, but you'll notice that the actual value that's being built is almost, uh, about twenty percent of the peak value. So we're seeing a lot more smaller permits coming in than the larger ones. One of the things that'll help stabilize the, uh, assessed valuation for us is if we start to see the, the, um, permit values start to go up, the average value go up, because that will mean more new projects are coming into town and larger projects are being built. Next slide, please. Over the past couple of years, to try and keep the budget balanced and to keep as many services, uh, going as possible, we had used reserves and one-time revenues. Um, the blue line is the percent of general fund expenditures and transfers that we have, uh, reserves for. The legal limit is four point three percent, that's Nevada law, and that's where we're at today. One of our goals is to start to rebuild that, so that we have approximately eight point three percent in reserves, which represents thirty days' working capital, and that is reflected in the budget, both of the budgets that were presented on the fifth and the ninth. Neither one of the budgets that we have presented, um, represents any impact from state or federal legislation, but we haven't seen any so far that we know are going to happen. Next slide. One of the results of, uh, of this recession has been that we've had to reduce the number of staff that we've had. To date, we've reduced five hundred and seven positions, of which about two hundred and thirty have been filled. If we have to go through with, um, the six percent cuts, that would increase another twenty-five point six five positions that are filled, and a total of fifty-five point six five positions would be removed, which is approximately another five percent of, uh, the remaining staff. The last slide, uh, represents what the feedback that we got from council and what we heard from the public over the past couple of days. When I asked for a six percent reduction from each department, it was slightly more than the seven point six million dollars that we needed to balance the budget, representing the seven and a half percent we were asking from staff. We have the ability to restore some of the programs, so what we did is, we worked through the list of, um, concepts that you gave us at the May ninth meeting, and I am proposing that we restore some of the programs in parks, um, the hours at the Northeast and, and, uh, Evelyn Mount Pools, the inclusion tech, the operation at Neil, uh, Road Recreation Center, those hours of operation, the senior and youth staffing that we currently have. We wanna restore the support to the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee and keep Sabian open. For the police department, we wanted to keep the CSO positions that work at the Neil Road substation, so we can keep that open. We believe we can restore two firefighter positions, we'd still have to lay off twelve, but that represents, uh, one crew per shift, and will give the chief a little bit more flexibility. For comm tech, we wanna restore one of the supervisor positions and part of the overtime budget, so that we don't impact that operation as much. In finance and human resources, we wanna maintain the current staffing level, instead of reducing the force in those departments. And in the city attorney's office, there were operations budget items that we felt would be important to keep. Um, all the other cuts that I presented on May ninth would continue in the budget, these are the ones that we're proposing to restore. If you have any questions, staff is here to answer them.
Okay, any questions, staff? Any questions? Mr. Aziz?
Including the, uh, the fees? I'm not sure where, including the fees that we were gonna adopt?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What is our business license tax for, for business? Do we, for, uh, just a business license, we, we go on the gross profits, I'll ask that and let somebody figure, tell me what that is later. On the, uh, 'cause I'm curious, we have a, uh, we have in front of us a sheet about what the proposed fees are, but not what they generate. So it's tough to say, does this one really help, if I raise this one or not? Um, 'cause I don't know if we have very many more shemend affair tables out there, but it'd be good to know that, uh, if I was gonna go bet on that, I would pay two hundred and fifty dollars to have one. But, like, what's a slot video poker machine? It's only twenty-six dollars to have one. How much, how many do we have? If I raised that by five bucks, would that be a huge deal? I, I don't know, so I'd sorta like to see what, what some of those are.
Just to clarify, sir, you'd like a breakdown by the different types of how much it generates?
Just, I don't wanna spend forty-five million staff hours on it, but just generally, what are the high points on here about, if I raised it by a dollar, would that generate some funds, or if I reduced it? Um, like, I'm looking at the mobile stage, we charge five hundred and fifty dollars to use the mobile stage. Did we ever rent that out last year? Do you know how many times we rented that?
Come up to the microphone, please.
Julia Conway, Parks and Recreation Community Services Director. Um, it, uh, I think last year was probably about five times, and in, in the prior years, it was more, but because of the down economy.
So I wonder if we're charging too much? I mean, we paid a lot of money for that, for the public to use, and if we overcharge it so that no one uses it, what's the point in having it? I mean, we might make more money by selling it off and saying it's not available anymore.
And the reason we are suggesting that is because of the cost of staff. If council would like us not to charge that, that, that's totally up to you. So we're, we're willing to keep it as is or reduce the rate, that's up to you.
Well, that's what I'm, I'm, I mean, right now, it costs about seven hundred dollars to rent that. I mean, in, in Wingfield Park, it's, it's five hundred dollars to have an event at Wingfield Park, minimum. So I just don't know how many times we're using it, as to whether we're overcharging for some things to let the public use things, or undercharging it, you know, supply and demand. If, if it's not being used, I think we should lower the prices, and if it's being used a lot, we should raise the prices.
Yeah, and, and it's all about cost recovery, and if, again, it's, if council would like us to lower that, to have more. If council would like us to lower that, to have more use of it, then we would take that direction.
Well, and that's why I don't really like it, particularly in Parks and Rec, is cost recovery, because I think we spent fifty thousand dollars for that thing at least. I mean, we spent a lot of money for it. And I know we only have to rent it out once for fifty thousand dollars, and that we would recover our costs, but if we never get it... And I think that all the stuff that we add on for someone to utilize our parks makes it very difficult for smaller groups to use these things, in my opinion, that we're under utilizing some of our parks because of those fees. So I'd like to just see... I mean, I'll probably adopt them today, but I don't see a justification one way or another about why they should be here. You know, why is it higher and lower? Because everything looks like it's just staying the same as last year.
We have reduced some of our rates under our cost... Our schedule of fees. We have reduced some of our rates, and we have increased some of our rates, but we have reduced our... Some of our rates, including the... The... Let me reduce... The Neal Road, we reduced our rates. We reduced our print media advertising, and we also provided... This is not a reduction. Our youth programs at the New Year's Eve party provided a rate there so that the families could have... Bring in families. We did lower our adaptive overnight camp program, so we did lower that price and provided a range so that families could... Or the adaptive individuals could have an opportunity to participate. So we don't always raise our rates. We sometimes lower them.
I just can't see them in here. I mean, I don't... This is by exception. I'm looking through... And like, the South Side School, I was looking for that.
Uh-huh.
Is that in here available for rental?
Yes, we do rent it. In fact, it's rented right now to a group, and it's rented upstairs, and we do gain revenue off of it.
That's what I mean, upstairs?
It's a very popular building. We... It does not have air conditioning or heat right now. We're looking for a grant for that, and so it's not rented in the heat of summer or in the dead of winter, but we do rent it out, and it is a popular building to rent.
And we've been looking for that grant for three years, right?
Yeah, we're still looking, and we hope to find it. We actually are talking with a foundation right now.
And on... Thank you, Julie.
Mm-hmm.
You just want questions on the whole budget? I'm not sure what you're... We're looking for right now.
So let's go ahead and go through them.
I have just a few things. On some of these, I was looking at some of the options. If we don't get the reductions, what we might still keep in here? And I'm curious what they were, like closing the Northwest Pool, three to four weeks during roof repair. Is that still a savings? Or is that up here that it will be open? And the... It's not that much money to...
Yeah, my understanding is that it will need to be closed during the repairs, but this would maintain the current level of hours otherwise.
Yes. I'm sorry, Jonathan Skinner, Recreation Manager. Yeah, these are different times. Actually, the Northwest Pool was during holidays. We typically have it open. For EM and ECC, that's a two-week during the Christmas holiday.
So those will still be closed under this scenario?
Under this scenario, that would actually be added back in.
They're back in?
Yes, sir. To clarify, what I'm proposing is the budget that we presented on Monday, the ninth, with these changes. So these would be added back in, so we would not close the pool during those times.
And is the... One of the proposed cuts was... This is from Public Works. Reduce the downtown maintenance to match the amount paid by the SAD. Were we going to put that in, or is that still stay out?
I did not recommend that for putting that back in, but we could make some trade-offs if you wanted to.
And two more quick things, Mr. Mayor, on this page. Was the reduce to snow removal by fifty percent? I was assuming that was a seventy-three thousand dollar savings. That was just in parks. It wasn't street snow removal, correct? Is that still considered to be out under this scenario?
Yes. The only things that were put back into the budget are listed up on the screen.
Okay. And we asked for... Or at least, I asked for information, and I promised Judge Howard I would call him back on this, but I didn't get all of it. It was just, he gave us information on the caseloads from the municipal courts. They did... I don't know how many judges were in each of those and what their budgets were. So I don't... Did I miss something, Dwight, on that?
I didn't have their budgets. I had the number of judges in each of the courts.
Here comes a man that might be able to answer your question.
Your name, Matthew Fisk, Municipal Court.
And there comes the judge.
There we go.
Does this to me each time?
I'm trying to look for my page.
Do you want those numbers, Dave?
Any specific questions we have, you have for us, we're happy to answer.
Yeah. And you've been very good at that. I'm trying to find that one page where you gave us in the answers what the caseload was on each... At each court, but I didn't see in there was what their budgets were in those courts or how many judges were actually there.
Okay.
And I might have lost it in some other piece of papers. I don't need that today.
Okay. That document is, I think, the second-to-last page of the forty-one-page memo you got from the last meeting, but the two data elements you just mentioned are not included in that. So if you'd like that, we can provide it for you.
Dave, I can give you the number of judges in each jurisdiction right now if you want.
Okay.
Yeah, North Las Vegas has two, Las Vegas has six, Henderson, three, Sparks, two, all others, one.
I'd like to add to Mr. Dorche's comments. They have some, what they call quasi-judicial positions, which are senior judges, pro temp judges, and referees that come in and aid sometimes once a week, sometimes two days a week. So we'd have to add those.
We have our share of pro temps, too.
But this is different. A pro temp is, in our case, is serving as a substitute when the judge isn't there. These are judges that serve in addition to their official judges.
Okay. So they add on. It's like having another court.
Exactly. One court will... One court has a judge that comes in once a week and handles a couple hundred traffic cases.
Thank you. Those are all my questions at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Aziz.
Just because I've got my members of the senior advisory board here, what the city manager, I believe, is proposing, both with the... Let's just start with seniors first. The... We'll maintain our current staffing levels, which would keep both positions in place. That's even under the six percent scenario, correct? And then on the inclusion tech, that was coming out on the six percent scenario. Now that's back in, correct? So we should be able to maintain our senior programs as well as our adaptive programs.
Any other questions or discussion? Ms. Andrew? Mr. Frazek?
Mr. Mayor, a few. On the memo, because we just got some of this stuff, on the potential liabilities for the holiday time vacation and sick, am I reading this that it's nineteen million?
The bottom one is if everybody in the city were to be terminated at the same time, that's how much we would owe at this time. That continually accumulates as people earn more time, and it also goes down as they use it. So that's not a liability. That's a cash liability. That's a total liability. The top section is what is available to be cashed out by individuals who could go... Come in at any time and ask for that time to be paid to them.
Okay. So... And then on the fee schedule, couple on the fee schedule, there was some additional fees by the court. Are those mandated fees? I mean, I guess I'd need some explanation, because it looks like there's several new fees being proposed, and where does that money go to? Does it go in the general fund?
I'd like to defer that to Mr. Fisk or Judge Howard.
I'm sorry, your question once again?
Yeah.
Ken Howard, on behalf of the Breeden Municipal Court.
Yeah, Judge, there's several new fees that are being proposed with the new fee schedule, dealing with the courts. Where do those fees go? And I was confused in the fee schedule whether they're mandated by NRS or if it's optional. And then if we move forward with the fees, where do those funds go?
Ms. Frazek, to answer that question, some of the fees... Most of the fees are based on inherent powers of the court to establish fees to offset the cost of its operations. There's one fee, the... I think it's the sealing of records fee that is in NRS. I have to check. Statutory. Some of the fees directly go... Will go directly to the general fund. Some of them will go to the court's administrative assessment fund and likely end up in the general fund to offset the cost of the court's operating budget. We are working with finance to distinguish which fees go directly to the general fund and which ones go through the court's administrative assessment fund.
Well, I would like to know that. I mean, before we're adopting the fees, where are those fees going to go? And like, the cash bail processing, how much is... Does the court think that's going to generate? For example, that fee, or the correction or processing for driver's license or registration dismissals, first request for extension? I mean, there's like six different fees on here.
We do have estimations on those, and actually, once again, the court has the authority to establish those fees.
Okay, so you don't need our...
I don't know that... You know, we're doing this as a courtesy, commodity. We have the authority, the inherent power of the court, because we're a separate entity, separate and apart from the city government. We can do so by case law. We don't have to come to council and request, for example, to impose a one-hundred-dollar fee for the sealing of records. What's occurred over the number of years, we've just provided that service for free.
Okay.
And now, because of the climate that we're in, we're saying, you know what? We're tired of imposing this task on our employees. We're going to shift it back on the defense bar or the defendants that come before us and say, we want to seal records. It's a great deal of time and effort on behalf of our staff that we feel that we might as well go ahead and start assessing a fee for that. Many courts are already doing that.
Okay. So...
And in response to your other question...
So... But let me get this straight. So you don't even need to come to us on the adopted fee schedule for these?
No.
So you're just doing it more for information?
Information and commodity. That's correct. To let you know what it is that we're going to be doing in the future.
Okay, so... But I think it would be helpful, as we adopt the budget, what you guys are estimating those fees to bring in? Because you're saying right now that those costs, that that's a burden to the court, so therefore, you're going to put that on the defendant, which makes sense, but what is the estimate of those fees coming in?
Well, if we came to the end run, I mean, would you deny us the imposition of the fees simply because we can't come before you now and estimate what the dollar amount is going to be?
No, that's not what I'm saying, Judge. What I'm saying is, this is a new revenue source for the courts.
Correct.
So as we're adopting our budget, we look at every single budget, including the court's budget. So there isn't a line item in there right now. It goes to what Councilman Aziz was talking about, the other fees on the parks. As we're looking at the fees, there's... How much is that generating? So as we're adopting our budget, if you... If this is... If you guys think this is going to bring three-hundred thousand dollars in fees, for example...
And honestly, I hesitate to make that statement to you as to what the dollar amount is going to be, because just as there was a question several months ago in regard to the marshals, and I believe it was from you, and the question was, you have X number of marshals over there, and we were told that the marshals were going to be bringing in X amount of money. Now, you recall the discussion that we had, and I indicated, I never want the court to get into a situation of telling you that we're going to be bringing in X dollars. Because we... I think the caveat is that we put ourselves in the situation, coming before you, if I say, we're going to bring in three-hundred thousand dollars, and if we don't do that, then you're going to be sitting there saying, well, Judge Howard, why didn't you meet the goal that you indicated to us that you were going to meet?
But that's not where I'm looking at this. Where I'm looking at this, you guys have obviously proposed a fee schedule to do. You must have an estimate on what that's going to generate.
And we have some tentative estimates. I don't want you to hold this to us, because this is the first time that we've started these fees. Do you have the...
Six-hundred thousand dollars.
A total of about six-hundred thousand dollars.
And then another question for staff on the slot...
Can I follow up with Judge Howard, who's here? First, I want to apologize. Now that I read your sheet, everything I asked for is on here. I just didn't... Wasn't reading your column correctly, so it was all here. But I think what Councilwoman Frazek is getting to is, if you're going to raise an additional six-hundred thousand dollars, and your budget from us is six million, is your budget really six-point-six million? Or do I say, you don't need six million, you need five-point-four million? That's what we have to decide. And I fully understand, you get to run the court absolute the way you do, but if you're coming up with another revenue source, like we're asking Parks and Recreation, too, and everyone else, that looks at your total budget. So if you're telling me right here, you think you're going to raise six-hundred thousand dollars, then can I cut your budget six-hundred thousand dollars?
And that's the point. I don't know that we can do that. I don't know that we can do that. You know, the bottom line, though, Councilman Aziz, if we are fortunate enough to raise six-hundred thousand dollars, it's going to benefit the city, it's going to benefit the court. Some of those fees are going to be directed to the general fund. The fees that are not directed to the general fund are going to be used essentially to offset some of the budgetary entries that we're making right now out of our administrative assessment fees.
I think we're saying the same thing, but since I have to establish your budget, and you're going to find some extra money somewhere, and I need extra money over here, why wouldn't I say, okay, I'll cut your budget by three-hundred thousand? I know that's tough to come forth, I think I found another source of revenue. Now take it all from me, because that's what we're hearing from the state.
So I guess what we should have done is waited a couple of months before we came in before council and indicated, you know, I think we're going to help...
I'm glad we know going in. That's something we'll think about next year, but I think that's part of how we have to work together as separate departments, since we have to approve the budget, is how much do you need? Not how you operate, that's totally up to you, but how much you need to do that operation.
But I just think to follow up, though, Judge, I think the court has, I mean, demonstrated in the past, you guys have given your funds...
Always.
To help with the general fund.
Right.
So, I mean, you guys did that voluntarily out of your own funds. You guys did that to help us with the past few budget cycles. So what I'm saying here, is there a way, maybe, that we do a three- or six-month track? I'm not saying use that estimate as gold, but is... Is there a way to help offset what the current budget adoption is?
We would have no problem in giving you an update...
Okay.
As to how we're doing throughout the year in regard to the collection of these new fees. Absolutely. That's not a problem.
Okay.
I think that's where we were coming from here, that you have given back in the past when you had that money. It was in February or something. You gave... It was a couple hundred thousand dollars, wasn't it?
Well, several years ago.
It was a couple million dollars. Okay. Anyway, Councilman Dorche, you want to go?
Yeah, and I think maybe a little clarification. We're approving your budget. If we approve it, it's, I think, what, six-point-five million or something? And my assumption is, any revenues you have that do come in would offset that six-point-five to some degree.
Correct.
You're not asking to use this money to increase your budget. Any budget augmentations you would have, you'd have to come back to us to increase the budget.
No, I don't think that's... Go ahead. Okay.[1710.54]
Okay, so, really, we are saying the same thing.
I mean, am I correct on that, though?
The city...
So if we approve the 6.5 million, and you get these additional revenues in, but to, to spend more than that 6.5, you'd have to do a bud- budget augmentation with us, correct?
Here's, here's a, a live example that actually spells out things as they are. Our budget is $6.9 million. The city is giving us $5.5 million. The, the city has told us, "This is what we are able to give you." That puts us in line with city departments. And we are making up the difference with these additional court fees. So we are meeting or exceeding all budget requests of the city.
So you, you control your entire budget, we just control what we give you?
Exactly.
So you wouldn't have to have a budget augmentation unless we ask them for more money from us?
Exactly, and we do not plan on asking for any more money from you. Or, we've established these fees to offset the cost of additional services. The people who go outside the normal course of a court process and incur more costs upon the city, those people will be bearing that additional cost on their back, rather than the city having to do so. If, if you look at each of the fees, that's how they're designed. It doesn't hit the general public. It's so that taxpayers are not paying for that additional cost incurred by a few people that have warrants issued for their arrest or want additional services outside the normal course of business. Okay, thank you, Matt, and thank you, Judge. Any other questions? Go ahead.
Um, yeah, the, the other question on the fees is, on the gaming, gaming side? I don't know who can answer this from staff, but I thought we were set by statute on how much we could charge per machine.
Councilman, you, you don't, any more questions from these municipal court?
No, I'm sorry, Judge.
Okay, thank you.
It doesn't appear that we have staff here who can answer that question right now, so if you don't mind, I'll get back to you on that.
Okay, because, and there's a difference. There's actually an increase on some of these, and then there's a decrease on probably the most common machine, which would be the video poker machine. So I was curious on that, and why we would do that.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, the, the other question on the business license fee is, on the, we have a franchise fee that is being charged and collected by Waste Management. And then we have another company out there, who, I think a few of them, who collect the, what is it? The trash and garbage, who aren't paying any, any of that, which is actually affecting our, our franchise fees here at the city. My understanding is the City of Sparks and the county charge that through their business license division. Has staff looked at that, and are they currently paying that now? Would be my, my other question. 'Cause to me, it seems like that's a competitive disadvantage if you have one company that's required to pay a certain fee, the franchise fee, and then you have others who are doing collection, actually siphoning off that, that commercial collection, and not paying the fee. So I'd like to know that from staff, and, and look at what, what Sparks and the county are doing, 'cause I believe we're not, we're not doing the same thing here at the city. And then the street sweeping, I do have a question for staff on the street sweeping. Does the entire, um, and I got the memo on the, what it would be, about 100,000 per year if we went down to once a month? Does the entire street sweeping come out of the, the street fund for the entire city? Or is that just the downtown maintenance district?
For the record, John Flansburgh, Councilmember Sfrazza, the street fund pays for all the street sweeping.
Okay, and then, Kevin, question on the redevelopment budget, because you're asking us to adopt the budget today for redevelopment. What's actually in there? Because in the, the staff presentation, it says you're gonna come back with, with options on the redevelopment budget. So what's actually included? I mean, we're being asked to adopt this today. What are we adopting in the redevelopment budget?
As far as what we have to turn to the state by June 1st, what we're doing is we're providing them with a balanced budget based on the amount of revenue that we have coming in, which would entail not having enough money to pay for the debt that's in there. What we need to come back to you with is a plan for how we're going to restructure that debt or pay for it through other means, but it will entail amending the budget at a future date.
Okay, so what, what's the actual, so we're not, at this point in time, by this adoption today, we're not talking about a general fund subsidy to the redevelopment agency?
No, ma'am.
Okay, and then, what is the, the shortfall on, on debt service within the agency?
Approximately $2.5 million.
Is that per year?
Well, that would be for next fiscal year, based on getting about $900,000 in revenue. If there were any change in revenue the next year, it would either go up or down based on whether or not the, the tax increment went up or down. But, in general, yes, it would be either that much or more.
And then, can you just go through quickly, Kevin, on, on this one? The debt service and redevelopment would include what?
Uh, we have four different types of debt service there. We have two bonds, a 1998, is that correct? 1998 bond that is close to being paid off, there's about four more years left on that.
And which one is that?
Can I ask Rob Miller to come forward? Do you know, Rob, what the debt paid for on that? While he's coming up, there's three other bonds, 2007, in there that have longer maturity dates through the end of 2018. There's a, a loan for the fire station relocation, and then we have some bonds for some road construction for the Cabela's project as well.
Mr. Knudsen, do me to interrupt you for a second, uh, because I was just informed, the mayor did open B3, which was the tentative budget and adopting the fee schedule. We're talking about redevelopment and so on. So we're gonna go ahead and open B4, and...
That should do it, sir.
B4, yeah.
Yes, how, and if you could have the clerk reflect for the record that all notices have been given for the public hearing?
Yes.
Probably notice was given, no questions.
Thank you, sorry to interrupt you, but go ahead.
Do you know what the 1997 or 98 bonds were for?
Rob Miller, for the record. Um, the 98 Fs, I believe, were as part of the theater block parcelization, land acquisition that we did. The O7s are mostly for the parking gallery, and those revenues are pledged to those, to that debt as well. Those two bonded debts are in RDA1. And RDA2 has the Cabela's infrastructure improvements, and then the fire station relocation loan.
Thank you.
The, just one other question. On the fire station relocation loan, that loan is currently held by, by the Katz offs, correct?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
And, and how much longer do we have on that one?
I believe there's six more years of payments.
Six years. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, while you were going, we reopened because the conversation evolved to talking about other budgets, not just the scheduled fees, so we went and opened B4.
Okay. All right, any other questions or discussion on B3 and B4? Yes?
Mr. City Manager, can you tell us? I want the, particularly the public comment to understand some of the recommendations that are coming from the city manager for adding, restoring some of the things into the budget from what we initially received from you on May 9th, are not the result of anything that we've received from the unions. Because in particular, for the parks piece, we haven't received those concessions that would accommodate that. So, that 215,000-ish that's here, as well as the 420,000 on the public safety items, can you share with us how you were able to restore some of those? And, and, you know, where was the give and take to be able to respond to the council's concerns that were expressed to you at our two prior budget meetings?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Uh, this is part of the 6% reduction, so no employee concessions are used in these calculations at all. What had happened was, is when we asked for the 6% across-the-board reductions, that number was chosen because it was close to the amount that we needed to cut. It actually was a little bit more than we needed to cut, so that we knew that when we had the discussion about where you would have some discomfort cutting, we'd be able to restore some of those. And this represents the level of restoration that we're able to afford within the amount of money that was cut in excess of the deficit.
I wanted it to be clear, because they, when they made their comment, they'd indicated that they'd heard that concessions were close, and this certainly does not reflect that, because we haven't gotten it yet.
Yes, ma'am, but the, the good news there is, if we are close and we do reach a conclusion, then none of the cuts proposed on May 9th will go into effect.
Any other discussion? Ms. Frazza?
And, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Iasi isn't here, but talked about, talked to him about this earlier today, and the concern over, over the libraries in the county, and which ones, I, I would like to have staff too, over the next few weeks, check in to with the county which libraries are scheduled for closure. Because I think we're talking about seniors and youth and all the programs, that has a severe impact to the City of Reno, all residents in Washoe County. But I think we need to look at that, what we can do, maybe partnering with the county, to see at least within the city's scope, how we keep those libraries open. And I've had NAV members approach me on this, even, you know, looking at, at some of their funding. But I think that's a service that, we're talking about all these other programs. I think that one is completely detrimental, having those libraries shut down, and what we can do with the county to prevent that. And then the second thing is, I think we are making progress with our bargaining units. I think we've gotten some good concessions on the table, and, and I'm hopeful that we're gonna come up with a resolution, so this doesn't have to move forward, so we can avoid the reductions in force, so...
All right, any other discussion or questions on B3 or B4? Chair entertain a motion on item B3. Have a motion, second all, in favor say aye. Those that oppose?
With the understanding, I, I didn't get my questions answered today on, on the, the, the slot fees and everything else. I mean, you're asking us to adopt a schedule to actually lower some of these fees. I don't know if I'm in favor of that.
I don't think any fees with gaming.
So, with the understanding that that's gonna come back to us.
Okay.
I, I can give you a very general answer on the business license fees, but I don't have the details. But Alex Woodley sent me a text that he and Michael Chomp looked at the NRS, 'cause I guess the business license fees are subject to NRS, and looked at them to see if we could raise them, and they didn't think we could.
But we're actually lowering the fee on some of these.
I di- I didn't see that, but we'll get you back a detailed answer.
Let's get back a detail on it, and we'll go from there, okay? All right, yes, here comes somebody.
I apologize, Jill, Jill Olson Finance. I believe the ones you're looking at, I, I think it is the fact that whoever prepared the spreadsheet did not format it with the two decimals. The intent was not to reduce it, so it should be with two decimals on the end. It looks like some of the fees were like $26.25 was the 10-11 amount, and it looks like they rounded it and dropped off the two decimals, so it went down to 26, is for an example. When I glanced at that fee, the intent is not for it to go down. It should've been carried out to the two decimals. So if you want to include in your motion that they be formatted with the two decimals in place, then the fee should be at the correct amount.
And how do these fees compare with Las Vegas?
I do not have that information, but we can check that.
Why don't you find that out before the next meeting, too?
Okay.
All right, I have a motion.
I would include that in my motion, then.
Okay. Have a motion, second all, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. B31, resolution.
Resolution number 7580. Resolution adopting the 2011-12 budget and adopting the fee schedule for the City of Reno, Nevada for the 2011-12 fiscal year.
Have a motion, have a second? Have a second, all in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. All right, B4, item B4. Chair entertain a motion.
You're, you're on B4, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'm moved to accept the staff recommendation.
All right, have a motion, second all, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item B41, resolution.
Resolution number 203. Resolution adopting the 2011-12 budget for the Redevelopment Agency Number 1 and Redevelopment Agency Number 2 of the City of Reno, Nevada for the 2011-12 fiscal year.
Moved to adopt.
Have a motion, have a second? Have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item B5, update presentation recommendation of reduction in force, discussion potential, direction to staff. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Um, this resolution is on the agenda in order to support the budget with the 6% reductions. We, of course, hope that that is not the final budget that we end up using next year, but in order for us to be in compliance with all applicable laws and civil service requirements, we need to take steps forward to put that into place. Thank you, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Dorch?
Yeah, Kevin, I mean, just, just based on the discussions we've had and where we're at with our bargaining units, I, I, I know that there's a sub- urgency to get this done in, in the sense that you've gotta, you've gotta get the notices out and everything like that. But, but as close as we are, I mean, is it possible to continue this till next week?
This wouldn't give him authorization to send out notices.
Yeah, it does, but one...
It does, and I, and I, and we've, and we've made it clear that those notices aren't going out for a while. But I think it gives you, this gives you the ability to start planning for that. I, I mean, I think everyone's optimistic that we're, we're, we're making headway with the bargaining units. Does it make sense for us to continue this for a week? And, and if not, I mean, I understand, but...
I've looked into it with staff, and we probably could put it off till May 25th, uh, which is a week from tomorrow, and it's a regular meeting. And we could place it on that agenda. However, we can also rescind it at any time, and it would give staff more time if we were able to move forward today.
Well, we could go ahead and pass it today, and we could rescind it on the 25th if we have to.
Can we talk about that, Mr. Merrick? As I understand it is, you would have the authority, what would be the first date that you would have to release the notice?
Uh, based on the current schedule, it'd be June 6th.
June 6th, which was what I thought. So if we postpone this to the 25th, 'cause I know we've had this conversation before about the timelines that you have to meet, but, but I agree, we're close. So if we deferred this to the next meeting, you would, would that date slip? The June date slip?
No, sir, this is a relatively small number of positions that we're talking about. So the real work that has to be done before the 6th is all the bumping rights and the, the research and background. So we would still shoot for June 6th, because we wanna make that July 1st deadline. However, it does compress our timeline a little bit.
I, I don't, personally, I don't have a problem with postponing it if, if others feel that way. So I think we, we're not gonna gain or lose anything by waiting till the next regular meeting on the 25th.
The only thing we gained is giving staff a little more time to start doing their homework and stuff.
Well, I think they can do their homework, Mr. Merrick, 'cause you never know what the eventuality is.
Okay.
But I, I think that gives us another week. We're gonna be meeting with a lot of the groups between now and the 25th to see if we can pull things together. And if not, then really the 25th is the last date.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, I mean, from everything we're hearing, I think we're, we're, we're close. And, and, and if we can, if we can get that done and not have to do this, I think, I think that's a great thing across the board.
I don't disagree.
So, I, I mean, if we, if we've got a week available, I'd, I'd personally like to wait a week.
Give me a motion.
Can I ask a question? Um, just, Kevin, on this one, because I believe FIRE has in their contract that they have a provision in there for the, the timeline to vote. And so, by putting this off a week, because we're gonna have to go out with them right away and, and get the feeling for their membership, that's the only concern I have. I mean, I'm comfortable putting it off a week. I just, Mr. Mayor, they had looked at suspending the rules before. I don't know if they would take a vote in to, to speed that up this time.
This doesn't provide a trigger for them to schedule their meeting, though, does it? I mean, there's, their meeting's gonna be based upon a tentative agreement, I think, with us to schedule their meeting. This isn't gonna trigger that. I don't think this would delay that at all.
We're very close, and I would hope that they, they got in motion one time to make an emergency adjustment, so they didn't have to go 35 days. And I would hope that they would do that this time. Because if they go out 35 days, we have no choice but to lay off people until we get their vote back.
And, and that's my only concern, because it is labor-intensive for staff to go through the whole layoff process. I mean, we have a shortage of staff, so I, I'm gonna support the motion, Councilman Dorch. I just, I hope that we're, we're moving quickly on, on taking thing... I, I hope the leadership will move quickly on, on taking things out to a vote, Mr. Mayor.
I hope you'll ask them to see if they can get permission from the big boys to waive that 35-day deal and give us a vote as soon as possible. Mr. Iasi?
Yeah, I'm not sure what's on our agenda tomorrow, and I fully support that. I think it's a... I think it's a wonderful opportunity for everybody to say we're coming to the end. But one thing I've heard from some people is if we don't come to terms now, as long as we come to some terms before June 30th, we'll rescind these layoff notices. And I'm not quite sure that's going to happen this time. I mean, if we keep putting this off and putting this off, I think we have a week to solve these, at least come to a tentative agreement with these, with all the groups. So I hope we have around-the-clock bargaining. So by next week, when we do the layoffs, we know where we are, except for the legislature.
Yeah.
That's always the big bugaboo out there.
And you might not know that until August.
But I think people should have a right to know what's going to happen to them by July 1st. And if it's layoffs, which I hope not, that's one thing. But if we can come to terms the next week, that'd be terrific.
Yeah, again, I guess from my perspective, Mr. Mayor, I think by postponing it one week, it shows, at least from this group that we have, we're, I won't say confident, but in good faith, we think we can get this done with the other side. So I don't particularly want to vote to do this today. And I think we just give the process another week. And if it doesn't work out, then the 25th really is the drop-dead date.
Okay. So do I have a motion?
So a motion to continue this to the 25th?
Yeah, until next Wednesday, right?
Until next Wednesday, the 25th.
Second.
Have a motion, second, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's the only one I thought I'd get a unanimous of.